All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Thanks, everyone, for joining us for our Q3 2GM Town Hall meeting. Today, we have joining us James Clea, the Micronaut Technology Lead, Punit, the Grails Technology Lead, Sergio, Core Team Development Member, Jeff Scott Brown, Practice Lead for the 2GM team, and our special guest panelist, Tim Burgland. And I'm Jen Weece. I work with the team here at OCI. And we are so excited to have you joining us today. We have a packed agenda for you, so we're going to go ahead and get started. That is just some housekeeping there. So I went ahead and did our introductions. We're going to do some community updates. We'll go through some updates with the Micronaut Framework, Foundation Updates, Grails Updates, Foundation Updates for Grails Foundation, and we'll have time for community Q and A. So a few things that we've updated for you all is we have a Community Resource Page. So a page where you can find all things related to community resources for you all for the Micronaut community. And we are working on putting one together for Grails community. So we started with Micronaut. And we had so many people reach out and are like, where should I go for this? Where can I find this? So this is just your one stop shop for all the things that you should need. And it is located right here, this URL, and you will get a copy of this presentation and these slides. So and it's also on the website. So this should be a great resource for you. One other thing that we've created is an event support form. So if you are doing, presenting an event, or you've got a meetup coming up, or you're doing a conference, or you know of someone who is doing one, and you're like, hey, we would love to have the Micronaut or Grails team help support us, help promote our event, any of those sorts of things, fill out this form and let us know because we definitely want to support your event. We want to support your talk. We want to know about it. So let us know by filling out this form, and we'll get it on an event page. We'll help tweet it out. We'll help spread the word. So just let us know, and we'd be more than happy to help promote that for you. Also, we've had a few folks already reach out and are like, hey, can we use your logo? How do we use it? What are some of the rules? What are some of the guidelines? So we've created a brand guideline, kind of informational packet, if you will, but it's online. And we've posted on our website, and this is the URL for it. And we're putting one together for Grails as well. So we've got this for you. It's going to be all the information you need. But if you have any questions, please do reach out. And this will help you know what to do and how to get all the information. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to James, and he's going to give us some updates on the latest with Micronaut.
Thank you, Jen. So yeah, we'll just talk a little bit about, you know, what's been happening and what's in the future for Micronaut and sort of what's and all the community involvement and all that kind of thing. If you go to the next slide. So just this past month, right, in August, we released Micronaut 3.0.0. I hope that that is not news, new news for you. But for those that it is, you know, you're welcome. Here you go. 3.0 has been released. It includes all sorts of really important changes to the framework. One of the big changes was about the reactive library that we're using. So previously, we included RX Java 2 as sort of the default in the framework. And now we don't include any by default, right? But we're using Project Reactor internally. We switched to exposing the Jakarta inject annotations by default, right? Instead of the Java X dot inject annotations. So we recommend everybody switch to using those. And there's been a lot of changes in regards to annotation inheritance, right? So previously, like, all annotations were inherited. So if you had some annotations on like a superclass, they were being applied to any subclasses, for example, and without any exceptions, right? And so that was causing several different issues. And so with the release of Micronaut 3.0, we took the opportunity to change the way that works. And now some inherit and some don't, and that's all sort of documented out on the user guide. We've also added in support for bean import. So you could import beans from other packages, from other like jars, for example. As long as we're using like the standard inject annotations, you can create beans for those other classes, which is really nice. We've also improved the, you know, our bean, our bean context to support injecting beans by generic qualifiers, as well as several other features in regards to qualifiers and inheritance and as well as limiting like what types are actually exposed when you create a bean. So you can, so if you, you know, create a bean, but you don't want that actual type to be injected, you can limit to say, I only want like the superclass to be able to be injected instead of the actual implementation. So that's a really nice feature. And we've had a lot of updates in all of the many modules that we, you know, currently, you know, maintain. I think there's close to 50 or something like that. A lot of changes in the Microsoft Security Module, as well as the Micronaut Data Module. So please check out the documentation for those. And 3.1.0 is coming soon, and it includes all sorts of really great improvements, allowing you to use regular expressions in your server filters, some file upload improvements. And we've also improved the code for random port binding. So if you have a lot of Micronaut tests, you may notice that sometimes you get like address already in use errors, right? And so we've improved the way that we bind to a random port. So that should be, that should basically never happen again. And we've added in support for creating multiple servers. So if you want to have like multiple different Nettie servers with different configurations, that support is there, as well as beans for primitive types and being able to configure the Jackson JSON Factory. So previously, that wasn't configurable at all. You sort of had to supply your own implementation. And now you can just configure it like everything else. And some Kotlin improvements in regards to propagating some contextual information to the coroutine. And so those are all really nice changes that are coming to 3.1.0 that should be coming out soon. And so we'll talk a little bit about the community involvement. We have excuse me, almost 400 unique contributors to the repository, right? So we're getting a lot of really great contributions and feedback from the community that we're really, really happy about and we're really thankful for that. 5,000 stars on GitHub, over 2,000 people on our getter, and 1,100 questions on Stackover Flow. So the community is very involved. And Micronaut launch has been really successful. We've been really, just really happy with the amount of use that that thing is getting, right? Over 65,000 applications created, right, since it was launched, which is seems like a lot to me. But so, excuse me. So yeah, so we're really happy with that. And and we've created a new infrastructure for our guides, right? So this infrastructure we created a little while back, but it's been shown to be fruitful and that we were able to upgrade all of our guides to Micronaut 3, right? And without, with very little work on our end, we're able to continually upgrade those guides and maintain them a lot easier than we were before and ensure that all of the code in them is tested. And so you should have much less issue with guides going forward if you did before. And that's a big thanks to Sergio, by the way. Sergio is the main person behind that affair. So what's next for Micronaut? So Micronaut, so we target major releases of Micronaut once a year, right? So there should be Micronaut for next year. And so some of these things may come in Micronaut 4, some of these things may come sooner, right? But these are the, some of the items that are on our horizon. One of them is native Kotlin compiler support, right? So there's a lot of things, if you're writing Kotlin with Micronaut, sorry, that we don't support because of the way that we support Kotlin. And by creating a native compiler plugin, we'll be able to make that experience a lot nicer. Bean validation spec 2.0. So we currently support bean validation spec 1.0, which is quite old. But 2.0 support is on the horizon. CDI, which is sort of, you know, an injection specification, that support for that is also in the works. And a built time Jackson alternative. So currently, Jackson, we've, we're able to modify the way Jackson works in a lot of ways to remove a lot of the reflection. But an alternative to Jackson we're working on, which will essentially replace Jackson with this other thing, which will support serialization and des事儿ization of your objects, the JSON, where the code is written to do that at build time, right? So that's currently in progress, as well as a whole host of of Groovy M improvements. So be able to create native images faster, have them execute faster, have them integrate with more things. We're always, we're constantly improving our Groovy M support. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, James. So if this is your first time at our Town Hall or hearing about the Micronaut Foundation, I'm going to tell you just a little bit about the Micronaut Foundation. And if you've already heard it, then here's a little bit for refresh. So earlier this year, we started the Micronaut Foundation, and it's to help, it's a non-for-profit organization that is to help support the Micronaut technology. And it's to help promote, evangelize, and support the advancement of Micronaut. And we have sponsorship opportunities. We have corporate and community sponsors. And we have had a wonderful community awareness and support so far. And we've, we've just been very happy with that. Everybody's been very excited. And we've had, recently, we have had a corporate sponsor that has joined, safree.net as a bronze level corporate sponsor. So we wanted to thank you very much for sponsoring the Micronaut Foundation. So thank you so much. And we wanted to just make sure everyone was aware that you joined the Micronaut Foundation. So thank you. And if anyone else is interested in learning more about the Micronaut Foundation, you can do so by going online and reading more about it. You can reach out to us. We're more than happy to talk to you about it. And I'm going to pass it to Punit, who is going to talk about updates with Grails.
Thank you, Jen. Hi, everyone. Today, we are going to talk about what's going on around the Grail's framework, you know, what are the recent releases and what are the plans for future upgrades? So Jen, can you, yeah. So Grails 5 is the major focus of this quarter, and we've been working continuously to get GA out. And what Grails 5 includes, it brings support with Groovy 3, and it also supports updated to Micronaut 3. In addition, we supported Grail 6.9, but you could also, you know, the chances are that Grail 7.7 would also work unless you are using some features which are delegated in the previous versions of Grail, Grail 8. We also updated Grails 5 to the latest Spring and Spring Boot, just 5.3 and 2.5 series, and Spock 2, and that's all, you know, Groovy 3 basically brings support. With, you know, the major highlight of Grails 5 is support for Groovy 3, which brings a parrot parser and a lot of other performance improvements. The parrot parser is basically more Java-like syntax. You could now use lambda expression in your Grail's application and things like that. There are not many changes you would need to do if you're using Grails 4 around Micronaut. Because, you know, Grails, I think most of things would work unless you are using some specific Micronaut features, which would require you to update. But so far, I have not seen any major impact updating from Micronaut 2 to Micronaut 3. Apart from that, Grails 5 GA would be released next week. So I'm excited for that, and I hope you all are. So these, these are the releases we did in the past quarter, you know, starting with June, July, I guess, next September, like, you know, we also did some Grails 3 releases, which included some updates, you know, because of some infrastructure changes around JFrog, we needed to make some changes in Grails 3, 4, and 5. Apart from that, Grails 4.12 basically to remove, you know, had some changes around the publishing of Grail's plugin and, you know, other improvements in the Grail's framework. The recent, most recent is Grails 5.0 RC3. Can you move to the next slide, Jen? The most recent version of Grails 5 is RC3, which basically updates to Micronaut 3. Apart from that, from the infrastructure point of view, we are using white source, you know, with to basically automatically update dependencies. A major significant change around navigable map, which, you know, which are deprecated in Grails 5. And there are some technical technicalities around metadata navigation map, which would require it to be decoupled from that. We also made some improvements to Grail's shell. That's for 5.0 RC3. And the latest 4.12 Grails 4, which is a stable version, a more stable version, we basically removed the publish, Grail's plugin publish, which was responsible earlier to publish your plugin to JFrog Artifactory or Bintre. Since the Bintre shut down already, so we removed this plugin from, you know, the new Grail's plugin application. So the alternates are, you could either publish your plugins to main central or any other private artifact you wanted to. Yeah, we have a dedicated blog post and, you know, around how to publish plugins to main central, or you could reach out to us if you need any help around that. Apart from that, there were a bunch of improvements in Gomper Hyphenate. So we updated to 7.05 from 7.04 and 4.12. As mentioned earlier, 3.3.14, you know, made an update in Grail's wrapper because of some changes in JFrog repository URL for Grails. Apart from that, we also updated to Groovy 2.4.21, which fixes some vulnerabilities. And this is the first Grails release, which was actually published to main central instead of Bintre. And we have also updated all the builds to, from Travis to get our workflows. The important thing for this is like Grails 2 has already reached end of life on June 30th, and Grails 3 would be end of life this month, end of this month. Yeah. Moving forward, once GA is out, then we are planning, the major focus is, you know, to have better integration with Micronaut. And also moving out Grails TSP from the Grail's core, so that it is more independent and, you know, making Grails more modular. We are planning to have some more improvements around Grail CLI and, you know, Grail's guides, more of the infrastructure level changes, which James mentioned earlier, you know, with Micronaut. So we are planning to do something similar to help us speed up updating guides and the process of updating guides and CLI to be more flexible. Apart from that, we are planning to update Grail's documentation around, you know, integration with Grails and Micronaut. And, you know, what, what Micronaut brings to its wins and all that stuff. That's all from my side. Thank you.
Thanks, Puny. All right. So as I mentioned before, if you're, if it's the first time you're hearing about the Grails Foundation, we do have a foundation as well to support the Grails framework. And similar to the Micronaut framework, this one is to help evangelize and promote the technology as well. We've also had a very wonderful support from the community. And since the last Town Hall meeting, we've had four more community members that have sponsored John Underwood, Tobias Kraft, Greg Zasbo, and Mark Berger. So thank you so much for supporting the Grails Foundation. Also, we've had an anonymous gold level corporate sponsor that has sponsored the foundation. So we wanted to recognize them for sponsoring. We thank you so much. Without the, for both foundations, it is important to note, these are open source frameworks. And so without the support of our, our foundation sponsors, we wouldn't be able to do as much as we can. We just, we really appreciate everything that we get from our community. So, so thank you so much again, and we wanted to recognize you. And so just thank you so much. So here is a list of some community resources. We like to make sure that we, we post these for everyone. And again, these are available elsewhere, but we like to just include these, these useful links. So I'm just going to just share these. So they're all in here, and then they'll be in the recording as well. So for Grails and Groovy, here you are. And then I just wanted to go over an upcoming event. This was requested by several members of the community. So we wanted to make sure that we made it available publicly for everyone. So we have a Micronaut deep dive workshop coming up in October, and Sergio, who is on here today, will be delivering that. So please tune in, and we would love to see you there. So without further ado, we have plenty of time for some Q and A. And our special guest, Tim, is here. And we have such a, from what I hear, a very big interest in Micronaut and Kafka. And that's one of the reasons we brought him, because the, the big interest, and there's been, been a lot of, some questions that I've been told, he's going to be able to help us answer possibly.
He'll sure try.
So, Tim, thank you again for your time. And I'm hoping, I haven't looked yet, but I'm hoping that folks have already uploaded some questions in our Q and A, and Jeff is going to help us go through those. And we're, again, thank you all for joining us. So we're going to go through Q and A. And let's, let's see what we've got here. Jeff, do you see any?
Yeah, so we should, before we go to the Q and A window, which there are questions queued up there, we should, I'm sorry.
I said awesome.
Oh, yeah. Before we go to the Q and A window and start working through that queue, I think there are, Sergio, have you got some items to discuss with Tim?
What Jen was mentioning, essentially, we have seen a lot of interest, actually, I believe, since Microt 1. And we have this phrase, which we call Microt is a foundation framework, and it's and we use it because you cannot build just the HTTP server applications with Microt. And we have seen people that build like CLI applications. And since the beginning, we saw people, they were building like Kafka consumers using Micronaut, which were not even having like HTTP servers exposed. And we have seen a lot of uptake in the, yeah, of our Microt Kafka integration. And I would like for Tim to see if they are seeing that same on the end. And why do you think that people are getting attracted to the combo of Microt plus Kafka?
Well, that second question, I think, is, is the question of the hour. Why, why does, why is it chocolate and peanut butter, the chocolate and peanut butter kind of situation? And I mean, Micronaut, did you say people use Micronaut to build command line utilities? You've, you've seen that?
Yep.
Okay, that's cool, because I think of it as a microservices framework and a thing that creates what is effectively a server process. So that's as a, and that's anybody who is kind of looking in, who's not somebody who regularly attends this call and, you know, a super deeply invested member of the community. The phrase is simply Microsot, Micronaut is a JVM microservices framework, right? That's, it's a lightweight way to make microservices, which is a super good thing. And I think the Kafka connection there is becoming more and more obvious. And the evolution I see happening, you know, if you just look at, maybe it was nine years ago that people were starting to say the word microservices, and nobody had any idea how to do it. It was just this insight that, wow, okay, maybe we should break these big things up into pieces. And, you know, this whole continuous deployment thing that crazy people are talking about might be easier if programs were smaller. And that, that movement started, it's quite mature now, and it's not really all that controversial. You don't like have to make the case for microservices anymore. But back then, we didn't know how to do it. And so there were some really bad initial implementations that just broke of like, well, you know, we have this big database. Let's just make our program a bunch of small programs that share the database. And that, that failed. And we evolved from there to let's have a bunch of small programs that communicate synchronously with one another. And that's still, I think, the dominant way of having microservices talk. That's, that's the assumption is that we reintegrate, you know, we take a program, we break it up into lots of pieces, and we reintegrate those pieces by some kind of synchronous communication mechanism like REST or GRPC or something like that. And that's successful, right? That first wave of database-based integration failed, and everybody laughs at that now. And it's like a punchline. You don't do it. You could sand kick in your face if you did. And the synchronous microservice integration is respectable and actually is successful and does work. But I think that there is a consensus being reached that that's a little harder than it needs to be. Yeah, you can get things done that way, but all these other layers are evolving to solve problems that are, I think, inherent problems in the synchronous connection between services. Things like service mesh. I was just watching a buddy's, like, over six-minute demo overview video of this service mesh thing that his company does. And I was thinking, wow, this is just freaking complex, you know? Does it need, does life need to be like this? And the, we can get into that more if it's interesting, but the evolution I see is event-driven services communicating through, well, we'll just say Kafka topics, because that's pretty much what people do. It doesn't have to be Kafka, but it's pretty much what it is. So you have these logs of events and services get work to do, either by being, you know, receiving some input from a front end, which is usually some sort of REST input. Someone throws a piece of JSON at you. from a mobile app or from, from a, a web front end. You do some computation and you put that computation in a Kafka topic. And other services consume from that topic. They get that event. And everybody is event driven and reactive and life is a little better. It seems like we're, life is working out a little bit better that way. Um, for people building microservices. So the interest and the affinity between Micronaut and Kafka, to me, is utterly natural because if you're using Micronaut, maybe you're building a command line tool and, you know, that's an outlier and it's interesting. You're probably building an application that's based on a microservices architecture and making that reactive and event driven. I, I, I see, uh, emerging consensus that that's just the right way to do it.
That all makes sense. Uh, and a, a, as folks move to, towards that type of architecture and want to take advantage of, uh, want to build messaging, uh, systems to take advantage of messaging. Uh, well, one of the challenges there is that's, that's one more integration thing, right? One more thing that I've got to write code for in my application to go communicate with Kafka or Rabbit MQ or whatever messaging engine that I, I decide to use. And an important thing that I think, uh, we ought to recognize about, uh, one of the things that Micronaut is, is it's, uh, uh, one of the things the framework does is it serves as a kind of an integration platform and makes it easier for folks building these applications to communicate with these, these, uh, the systems, like, uh, systems like messaging engines and distributed logging and, uh, uh, platforms and databases and all, all these things that, uh, your micros or, or applications are gonna want to communicate with. And the, the, the support that we built in Micronaut for communicating with Kafka follows, uh, an approach similar to, uh, how we've implemented support for integrating with lots of things. And that is, we, we've eliminated a lot of the, the applicant, the, the, uh, source code that a developer might have to write to integrate with Kafka. And we make it so you can declaratively, by way of annotation, generally, you put an annotation in place and say, when I call this method, I want, uh, uh, the argument to this method to be posted to, uh, a Kafka topic, right? You declaratively express what you want to happen and at compile time, Micronaut generates, uh, uh, all the, the interactions with Kafka for you. And then for the most part, as, as the application developer, you're not writing that, uh, you're not dealing with the Kafka API and, and, uh, writing any of the lower level stuff there. So one of the things that, that, uh, that we've done with Kafka, and we've done this with lots of other technologies, is we've made it really, really easy for folks to take advantage of these sophisticated systems. Uh, what do you think, Tim, are the things that keep, what, what are the obstacles that keep folks from adopting Kafka? That, uh, a framework like Micronaut could contribute to, to ease the, sort of grease the, the skids there?
That, you know, the, having to deal with the mechanics too much is one. And I would, I mean, I behold my shocked face that there are annotations that make that work. There would have to be, you know, that's how Micronaut's gonna do that. And that's good. Cause you, by and large, as an application developer, um, you don't want to be thinking about that stuff. Now, I want to come back to that point in a minute. But, um, yeah, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be sitting there writing code against the producer and consumer API. Uh, if you don't have to, that just doesn't make sense. I don't know, I don't quite know the answer, Jeff, because the big obstacle I see is that it's just a weird way to write software. And a lot of us haven't done it before. So I don't yet have the, the insight myself to know where frameworks need to go in the stack. But let me, let me back up a step and say, like, anybody who's been building systems for a little bit, uh, you know, if you got a computer science degree and you came up through the traditional path, even if you didn't, uh, you're probably trained to build a database and a program around it. And that's how you build software. And, you know, we, we call that a monolith. Usually when we say monolith, we mean it's big and scary and hard to maintain, but that, that, that monolithic architecture, right? That's what we're all trained to do. And this whole, let's break it up into pieces and have them react to events and have events be the system of record and all that. That's super weird and nobody knows how to do it. And a lot of people are building their first system. And so the questions that I see people struggle with are kind of a combination of architectural and computational. Like, how do I even think about how to build a system like that? And, okay, if everything is events and it's not a row of database state that I can just go to and get, how then do I, you know, present the user with his or her current account balance or, you know, whatever? So. And there is, uh, this may be a lame answer, but it's, it's sort of a forward looking answer. There is like all this stuff that we're building to, to that, this, this layer, like you're taking care of the producer and consumer stuff. You're getting messages into the application. And, you know, here's my Kotlin application code that actually does the differentiated value added stuff. And here's some, like, stream processing or event driven babysitting stuff that I'm doing. And there's some of that, that, that frameworks are gonna need to suck into themselves. Um, I don't know where all the boundaries are right now. From a Micronaut perspective, I can tell you from a stream processing perspective, um, that's happening. There's things like K SQL DB, um, which you can run for free. Uh, it's a, it's a fully, the, this message brought to you by Confluent Cloud. It's available as a fully managed service in Confluent Cloud. So if you have like, you know, five topics that each have a piece of the data that you need to consume in your service, you could do a join, you could write a SQL join and mush them all together into a, a new event in one topic and just have your annotated consumer consume that. Like, you know, five years ago, you would have had to write all that code yourself and that would have been terrible. So stream processing frameworks have, have gone up the stack and done that. And I know application frameworks are gonna have to come down the stack and help with certain bits of, um, boilerplate that we've now imposed on ourselves by, by making this transition to events. I don't know what that is yet. Um, I wish I did, but that's, that's like a thing, kind of a challenge for communities like Micronaut to build applications. But you know how you discover what these things are. You, you build three applications this way. And the third time you do it, you're like, oh, I did that three times. That should be an annotation in the framework. Uh, and I don't know what those things are, but I know that they're there. Uh, and I think we're early enough in our event driven life that we just, we don't see that.
That's all, that's all good info. That all makes sense, I think. Uh, Micronaut, I think, has done a really good job of addressing, uh, a part of what you started with. And that is, so the application shouldn't have to be writing a lot of code to interact with, uh, the Kafka API and have to learn all that stuff. Uh, so the, the framework does a really good job of, of managing, uh, uh, managing all that plumbing for the application developer.
Yes.
Good info. Thank you, Tim. So let's, uh, we've got a question. As I work through the questions in the, uh, Q and A window, we'll start with one that's, uh, uh, targeted at Tim. So, Tim, uh, what is the, uh, what's the release schedule for Kafka three? And, uh, uh, Don is curious. So the question is from Don Gardner, by the way. Uh, good morning, Don. I'm glad to, uh, hear from you. Uh, so what's the release plan for Kafka three? And I was curious about using a stable version of Kafka without Zookeeper.
Uh, okay. So, release plan for Kafka three, I'm looking up a link right now, is three days ago. Um, I'll get you a blog post. What day is today? So, yeah, it's three days ago. Uh, so I'll put this into the Zoom. Um, for everybody, including a video that I got to film in Krakow, Poland a month ago. That was super cool. So just kind of an overview of the features of, of Kafka three. The big deal with Kafka three is it, and, you know, everybody's like, oh, wow, it's, it's a big version number. There should be lots in it. And from a semantic versioning standpoint, the three makes sense because there's a lot of API deprecation happening that has to do with the transition to Zookeeperlessness. So if you've been following Kafka releases for the last year and a half, um, there have been all of these little pieces of connective tissue getting cut. Um, and if, if you don't know what to look for, it's not obvious, but all of them have some kind of Zookeeper connection involved in them. Sometimes they're like new admin client APIs being added for this, that, or the other thing. And you're like, that's cool. Uh, what's next? Is there a neat feature, you know? But they're, they're all having to do with, um, snipping out the connections to Zookeeper, uh, so that a release or two from now, it will just be able to fall out. And nobody had better take this as any sort of plan or commitment or anything, because I'm not a PMC member. I, I don't. And if I were, I wouldn't know. But my guess is that'll be this year, is you'll have a production ready. I'm sorry, by this year, I mean, twenty twenty-two. I'm already in the next year. I'm living in the future. In twenty twenty-two, uh, we will probably have that, you know, production ready. Everything's cool. As of two point eight, um, in the spring, late spring, I'm gonna go with, yeah, um, you had the, uh, uh, developer preview of, uh, basically single process Kafka, you know, you, you, the, the Kraft protocol was running and, and you could do things without Zookeeper. But you can't do everything. It's not production ready. It's not production ready in three point O, but, uh, old APIs are being deprecated and that's all cleanup and prep for the completed thing, which I think will be twenty twenty-two.
Awesome. Exciting stuff, uh, coming, uh, keeps coming from the Kafka folks. Well done. Good, good, good. Um, let's see, uh, another question, uh, from Don also. Um, so what are the changes in Micronaut three regarding the need or no need for, um, the add introspective annotation uh, for Pojos requiring serialization? So James or Sergio, could one of you speak to whatever changes were introduced in three that relates to add introspective?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I don't think there was any, um, changes for Micronaut three regarding introspection and serialization with Jackson. Um, the being introspection module that we have, which, uh, eliminates a lot of the, uh, reflective access that Jackson uses, so uses, um, being introspection, so it's the the way of doing that.
I think we have removed from, so previously adding perspective in Micronaut to added reflective access, I believe. And it has no, no longer that's for GradV. So that's, I think that's the change that has happened regarding adding perspective in Micronaut three. So if you are like using GradV, um, check out, but doesn't impact you. And I think that's in the, in the Micronaut three release notes. But that's the only change that I am aware of regarding introspective.
Very good. There was a question about, um, uh, it looks like it was answered online, but I, I, I want to address it verbally so, uh, other folks can hear. But there's, there was a question about, uh, can we say that Micronaut is highly, uh, coupled with Gradle? And the answer to that is no. My, my pronouns not highly, highly coupled to Gradle. There, there are lots of Micronaut services that, uh, that don't use Gradle at all. Um, early on in, uh, uh, Micronaut's, uh, evolution, we decided to embrace, uh, both Gradle and Maven. Um, and, uh, so Gradle kind of, uh, i- it is favored in a way. And that is when you create a Micronaut app, if you don't specify what build tool you want to use, by default, Gradle is what is generated. Um, but it's a simple switch on the command line or a button in the, uh, launch UI, if you're using launch that, uh, Micronaut that I own, uh, to use Maven. So, so there is no dependence, uh, on Gradle, uh, for, uh, for Micronaut developers. I'm a giant fan of Gradle. I love working with Gradle. Um, that's largely a personal preference thing. Uh, many folks feel the same way about Maven. I think Maven's a great tool, uh, as well. And we've got great support for both. So you get to decide which of those you want to use.
Yes, uh, we have also a micro Maven plugin that we develop and support. So I just pasted the link in the chat. Uh, so we have official plugins for both bill systems. And, yeah.
Yep. A related question. I'm sorry, James, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing to take that a little bit further. We don't, uh, it, uh, one of the sort of ethos that I have about that is that we don't even require to use Gradle or Maven. Right? So any of the things that are in our, our build plugins are designed just to make your labs easier. They're not designed to be required in order for the, the framework to function. So we have, I've, I've seen people use like other build systems and write Micronaut applications and, and you can totally do that, right? So there's nothing in Micronaut that requires Gradle or Maven, right? So.
Can I do it with Ant? I would just like to feel like a younger man for a few days.
In principle, it, it could be done with Ant. You'd have to be, you'd write and per stuff on your own. And that's, uh, thanks, James, for pointing that out. Uh, you could, if you like. Look for a, uh, building Micronaut services with Ant blog post from Tim Burgling.
Don't, don't look too hard.
A, a related question from Ibrahim is, does each version of Micronaut require a specific version, uh, for Maven, just like it does for Gradle? James, would you speak to that?
Yeah. So the, the only thing that would require a specific version of Maven or Gradle is our build plugin, right? So Micronaut itself, like I just said, doesn't, doesn't matter. Um, but, uh, the, as far as the Maven version, um, I'm not really sure that we ever change, like, I don't think we've ever changed like the version of Maven that we use for it. Maybe we have, but I, I'm not really totally sure on that one. Um, I'm not aware of any specific Maven version that requires. I think the, the latest version of our Gradle plugin, uh, is built on Gradle seven. And we require Gradle seven.
Which, uh, leads us right into a, a question from Soren. Good afternoon, Soren. Um, so Soren is asked, why not go with Gradle seven dot two for Grails five? And I know that at least part of that is, uh, we have to draw the line at some point, right? There'll always be, uh, it's hard to, uh, keep up with. Uh, we can't have the latest of every single dependency in a release, but, um, Puny, can you speak to, uh, some of the discussions that were had around that and why Grails five didn't, uh, ship with, uh, Gradle seven dot two configured by default?
Right. Uh, yeah, uh, the Grail uses some, uh, some plugins, uh, internally Grail plugins, which might not, uh, which probably are not updated to Gradle seven yet. And that was one of the reasons to stick to Gradle six point nine. And, uh, this happened so close to the Grail's RC release that, uh, we didn't want, uh, uh, you know, uh, to wait for all those things, uh, to get Grails five GA out. But as I said earlier, uh, you know, uh, although I have not, uh, tested, one of the plugin which I know, uh, was stopping Grails five, uh, to be supported with, uh, Gradle seven was, uh, uh, a plugin which provide you, the provided scope for optional dependencies called, uh, Nebula Extra, Gradle Extra Configuration Plugin. That was not earlier updated to, uh, support Gradle seven. Uh, it uses some internal Grail API and, uh, which is a break to change between six and seven. Uh, so once, uh, since that is updated and we also updated it to the latest, uh, probably, uh, you know, uh, you can still update your application to Gradle seven and run it. Uh, yes, you would have to make some changes, uh, you know, uh, such as a copy spec, uh, uh, you have, for example, uh, uh, Grail class copy spec, which require you to set some delegation strategy, which is not configured by default. So if you do that in your Grail's application, uh, a basic Grail's application would work just fine. But if your plugin or, you know, API is using Gradle APIs, which are not compatible with Gradle seven, then, you know, uh, Gradle six point nine is the best option.
Very good. Good information. Thank you, Puny. Um, another Grail's, uh, related question from, uh, Charles Grossman. Uh, good morning, Charles, uh, is, uh, will the modularization of Grail's GSPs cause any issues with people who are using site mesh with Grails? So that's a reference to a comment that Puny made earlier. One of the things that, uh, we're working on is modularizing GSPs to make them, uh, uh, easier to use separate from the rest of Grails. Um, so Puny, can you, are you aware of any issues that folks are likely to have if they're using site mesh in their GSPs? Once the modularization.
Um, I, I am not aware of any changes, but if you are using Grails and GSP along with it, um, modular, modularization is only, uh, you know, to be able to use GSP outside of Grails. Uh, so for your existing application which use Grails and GSPs, it would still work. I mean, I don't see why it should not, but uh, if there are some changes which would, you know, uh, regarding site mash, it would probably break when you use GSP with Spring Boot or Micronaut, if you want, uh, things like that. But, uh, we don't know that right now.
Yeah. So that work hasn't been, uh, hasn't been implemented and really hasn't been fully designed yet. Um, but I, I expect that what we'll end up with, the likelihood is what we'll end up with is site mesh support will work in the same meta name equals layout, all the stuff that we support now for site mesh layout, except for the convention based layout location. That might, uh, not make sense outside the context of Grails, but site mesh, uh, in general, uh, will almost certainly end up be, still being supported in the modularized, uh, GSP, uh, GSP libraries, I imagine. Um, so Jim Mason asks, uh, what code generators are in the roadmap for Grails? Uh, we have the current scaffolding solutions. Will we have services scaffolding from hybrid eight models? Scaffolding for Spark, Kafka, et cetera. Uh, so part of that is, uh, will we have services scaffolding for hybrid eight models? And in, in a way, that's what the Grail scaffolding is, uh, in particular for Gorm hybrid eight models. I don't know that we have any new code generation stuff, uh, on the roadmap. I don't know that we have any new code generation stuff, uh, on the roadmap right now. Uh, Panit, do you know of any new, uh, are there any code generation capabilities that are on the shortlist that have been discussed recently?
No, uh, yeah, we have not discussed anything, uh, for the future. I mean, like, we could, uh, potentially, you know, if he, if, uh, the person can open up the issue in Grail's code and. Send some suggestion or probably a better idea would be send a PR, uh, we would be happy to include all those, uh, in the future roadmap, uh, because we, yeah.
Yeah. So nothing, uh, nothing specifically, uh, on the roadmap or short term horizon right now, but, uh, all ideas are welcome. And if you've got ideas for different kinds of scaffolding or different kinds of code generation, we ought to do. Uh, that feedback is, uh, is definitely welcome. Um, so please, as Panit said, open an issue in the Grail's repo or provide that feedback to, uh, you can also open a discussion in the community Grail Slack. Um, to discuss that, but ideas for, um, uh, extensions like that, that we ought to consider developing, but those kinds of ideas are definitely welcome. So please, uh, please share those. Um, so Abraham asks, uh, can we use Micronaut to build a jam stack? Can we do things like SSR slash SSG? And I have to be honest, I don't know what SSR and SSG are. Do, do those terms?
I think it's a size that stands, uh, stands for static site generation. And the other one is server side generation.
Okay.
So. You can build, uh, you can use my, as I said, uh, it seems like a joke, but it is not a joke. You can use my code for almost, uh. Anything involves the JBM. For example, I use. The micro R S S, uh, core module and the micro Jason fit module. To generate the JSON feed and the R S S feed of my. Uh, personal website. Uh, so you can use features on micro to generate, uh, a static websites. Absolutely. Um, we don't have like any official, like a static website generator built in micro. We don't have that, but, uh, we do builds, uh, we do build a static website with micro. For example. The micro guides that Jane was mentioning in his talk, we are building, uh, that using a lot of micro features. Uh, so we. Eat our own dog food to build some of our sites. And in terms of, uh, server side generation. Uh, we have abuse modules and we support many template engines. So you can generate HTML on the server side with micro. It really is. You can use. If you are an old school guy, you can use velocity, you can use time leave, you can use, uh, rocker. So we support like, um, you can use. Um, handlebars. So we support like five or six. And template rendering engines and. I am a big fan of, uh, server side, uh, HTML generated. So that's completely possible. Uh. The jump stack part of the question, I am really a bit new to that. So I don't exactly what does it mean to be jump stack compatible, but, uh, in general, both parts server side. Generation and a static website generation. We, you can absolutely do that with Michael.
Very good. William Melonowski has asked, uh, has the engineering meeting been discontinued? I really enjoyed reading the weekly notes. And the answer to the question is no, the, uh, engineering meeting has not been discontinued. Sergio, can you comment on the, uh, the weekly notes that used to be published?
So the engineer is still going, uh, it's alive and doing good, but I think we have been a bit, uh, behind on publishing the. Uh, the notes of the meeting. So thanks for the wake up call and we'll try to be more public over that. But yeah, the engineering meeting is, uh, alive and good. And that's the way we coordinate much of the work around the framework.
And it is good feedback that, uh, you enjoyed the meeting notes and, uh, Sergio said, thank you for flagging, uh, the, uh, that, uh, we haven't been publishing them, uh, that, and, uh, we'll get back on the wagon and keep that information, uh, being updated for the community. So thanks for, thanks for flagging that concern. Uh, so the idea of, uh, command line applications came up a couple of times in discussion here today, and, uh, I, I think it maybe it's worth pointing out that, uh, so folks think of Micronaut services as these microservices that are running by default to Nettie. And, uh, uh, provide rest endpoints and, and do the things that people generally use Micronaut for, but it's important or valuable to recognize that there are a number of different, uh, application types. Uh, that Micronaut supports. And an easy way to see them is if you go to launch that Micronaut that I O, uh, where you can create a Micronaut app, you, there's a dropdown for application types. And there are five or six different application types. So one is just Micronaut application and that will create a, uh, Nettie based, um. Micronaut server, but, uh, other options in that list are CLI app. So the project is config specifically set up to be a, a command line. App. There's no Nettie or HTTP server component of that. So you can create a CLI app. You can create a message driven app, which by default will be configured, uh, with Kafka. So if you go to launch and, and create a new app and have selected message driven application as your application type, what you're going to get is a thing that's already configured to communicate with Kafka. Uh, which is great. Uh, we've also got a GRPC application type. And I'm forgetting some, uh, function, uh, you can create a, a function application for serverless. And I think that's all of it. Maybe I'm missing one, but if you go to launch that Micronaut that I O, that's, uh, you, you'll see them there. And, uh, the great majority of Micronaut apps are, are, are services that are hosted in Nettie, but, uh, there are a lot of Micronaut services out there that are using, uh, um, serverless functions. There are lots of Micronaut's, um. Applications that are CLI apps. So that's all, uh, good capabilities for folks to be aware of, especially folks who only think of Micronaut as a framework for building these, uh, microservices, serverless APIs.
One use case that I would like to point people is, um, so my code has like two core. Things. One is the dependence injection module and another one is the. Another big one that I enjoy a lot is the micro HTTP client. So my code HTTP client, if you have worked with, uh, HTTP client on the JBM, you probably have used like, uh. A Bali or OK HTTP client, and you typically have to combine that with Mossy. To like, uh, do things like serialization into a JSON array into a list and things like that. So my code HTTP comes with. Uh, batteries included and you can use it anywhere. Uh, so one of the uses, for example, that I use for, uh, CLI applications is if you want to build an internal tool to consume an API. Uh, sometimes sees I use it, for example, to consume the GitHub API is really easy to create like a declarative. Uh, HTTP client, which is basically micro at an interface, which my account will build at compilation time. And you just essentially like call it, uh, from the. From a CLI application. Uh, and, uh, you can use, for example, the micro HTTP client in great applications. And you can use the micro HTTP client in Android applications as well. So, and in Android applications, you can use, for example, micro dependence injection. Instead of something like dagger as well. So the core technology, the DDI and the HTTP clients. Uh, they can be used in, in a lot of, uh, different use cases.
Awesome. Uh, it is just about the top of the hour and one more question just now popped up in the QA window. We'll address that and we'll get buttoned up here, but the question is again from Abraham and he says, uh, is Micronaut Lambda function built to be working only with AWS? And strictly speaking, I think the answer is yes. Lambda is an Amazon product or platform. Um, but, uh, we have function support for, uh, all the major cloud providers. We've got function support for. Oracle cloud functions. Uh, James, can you summarize really quickly, um, uh, to support for the various, uh, function platforms?
Yeah. So, um, so I, I want to just make one quick note. Last thing on the CLI thing is that the Micronaut CLI. Right? So you can install it with SDK man, you know, the Micronaut CLI. That's a micro application. As a CLI, right? So. And it's actually compiled to grow VM. And so, uh, it's sort of encompasses all of the, the great things about my car. But, um. Yeah. So we have support for, for, um, so we have sort of two different variants of function support. We have sort of like a raw function support where you. Uh, directly interact with the API of the cloud vendor. And we have, uh, and we also have sort of a, a sort of act as like a web application, uh, variant where you write controllers. And, uh, and they get called instead of you having to interact with the cloud vendor API directly. And we have, uh, both of those various supports for, uh, Azure, uh, GCP. Uh, AWS and Oracle. So we have. Uh, I think, I think that's it. So, um, however you want to do it and whatever cloud vendor you want to use, you can use serverless support with my car.
All right.
Thank you for that, James. There isn't, I'm sorry, Jen. There's another question from Abraham, but we are out of time and Abraham, I promise we'll send you a, uh, we'll send an email to address your question about serverless there. But, uh, Jen, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Please go carry.
Oh, no, you're fine. Um, so I just wanted to tell everyone, thank you for joining us and I wanted to thank our panelists today for joining us and our special guest, Tim. Thank you so much for your time today.
My pleasure.
Yes, thank you. And we hope everyone and enjoyed the, the session today and we'll look forward to seeing you next quarter at our town hall. So thanks again, and we'll see everyone later. Thank you. Bye.